All of our visitors, all of our principals, everyone that's here tonight. Probably take awhile for all of us to get used to these microphones using them, but we will eventually work through that. First thing on the agenda, I'd like to ask Mr. Glover if he will, to lead us in prayer, and also, we have a few people that we need to ask prayer for, so at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Glover, if he will, with his.
I believe some of our prayer requests include Ms. Connie Dyer, mother's passed away, which is also Ms. Stephanie Dyer's grandmother-in-law, Ms. Jenny Webb, my Haley McCall, Marty McCalib, who's not here with us tonight, he's sick, and also, Mr. McCalib's wife's got a death in the family, Mr. Scotty Lewis also, and if we all would just bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here today and be here during these trying times in our country, dear Father. Be with us tonight as we make some of the decisions for our community. May we keep you in our hearts and our minds, and that we may be able to make the right decisions tonight, dear Father. Be with those that I spoke about, dear Father, may you heal them and touch their heart, dear Father. Be with all of those in our community and our country that are affected by the COVID crisis, dear Father. May you heal them and keep you and may we keep them in our hearts, dear Father. Be with our teachers and our kids and our employees, that we may be able to help keep them safe, dear Father, and be with the people in our community, our government leaders, our local leaders, and may they be able to make the right decisions for us also, dear Father. Most importantly, dear Father, we want to thank you for letting your son down the cross for our sins, in your heavenly name, amen.
I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda is, we've got a parent request, and I would like to ask everyone that believes, anxious to run at this time, there cannot be no recordings of this, and I would like for everyone to leave except the parent that is asking for this request. Go on to consent items. Okay, we've got our consent items, it would be A, board minutes to approve those. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Well, second.
Second.
Who said that? Taylor? Okay. Jones? Y'all gonna have to give me a second to get used to the, where the voices are coming from.
All in favor of this? Close. Okay, item B is permission to attend the following school events for the fealty. They have got a state beta convention in February in Nashville, and it will be an overnight stay, and I guess this will be contingent to what this code does, if I correct.
If that's where you go then forward, where you go then, I don't even know if I have any things to keep pretending.
Okay, do I have a motion on this? Motion to approve. Second.
Apple.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Close. Okay, our third consent item is permission to apply for a TDA STEM grant, the Smith County Middle School is applying for this, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Lewis?
Second.
Second.
Taylor?
Any more discussion on this? All in favor? Close. Superintendent actions. Would you like to go over any of those? Anything you'd like to go out and talk about or anything? Alright, let's go to UBSA, it is the approval for the new school calendar 21, 22.
Can I make a motion to approve?
You make that motion.
Manny.
Second.
Taylor?
Any discussion on this? No discussion, all in favor? Close. Get your dog.
I can hear him, yeah.
Okay.
But nobody else.
Oh, I ain't been pushing no button.
Okay, let's go to item B, its policy amendment 6.3702, for athletic drug testing. Do I have a motion?
So, over.
Second.
Glover?
Any discussion? All in favor? Close. Item C, 2020 LEA compliance report, motion?
So moved.
Manny?
Second.
Yes.
Lewis?
Any discussion? All in favor? Close. Approval for school audit being done. Do I have a motion?
Blue.
Second.
Second.
Manny?
Any discussion? All in favor? Close. Approval for school audit being done. Do I have a motion?
Blue.
Second.
Second.
Manny?
Any discussion? All in favor? Close. Approval for school audit being done. Do I have a motion?
Blue.
Second.
Second.
Manny?
Any discussion? All in favor? Close.
Roll call.
I guess we need to do that roll call. Excuse me, I'm wrong. Alright, let's back up. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Absinthe? Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Siff?
Yes.
Okay, bid approval for gasoline and fuel. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Glover?
Second.
Jones?
Okay, this was money being spent, and would be roll call, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
And Absinthe, Taylor?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Siff? Okay, bid approval for gasoline and fuel. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Glover?
Second.
Jones?
Okay, this was money being spent, and would be roll call, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
And Absinthe, Taylor?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Next thing on the agenda is the bid approval for diesel fuel. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Glover?
Second.
Apple?
This is money being spent, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Manning?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Item G is a proposed kitchen renovation for Carthage Elementary. I think we need to bring that out and talk about that a little bit, and I think we've got, David here.
Let me say first, before you look at the numbers, I bet another architect did that when I seen it. But it took us, this is not something that has to be done this second, but it's going to have to be done. That took you, what, eight months, just get the spec sheet?
Yep.
And so, that's, we just want you to move. It's going to have to be done at some point, and I'm going to turn it over to David, but I, we just didn't want it to fall on us, and we went on top of it, so.
Again, this is just for your information and your consideration, I think so part of my job is to let you know when things like this need to come up. Carthage Elementary, as you know, is 40 years old, and kitchen hasn't been renovated since it was built. We've got, can y'all hear me? Do I need to?
Yeah.
What we've got, the main problem we've got at Carthage Elementary at this time, there are three main drain lines that feed that, that kitchen. Two of them are collapsed, one of them is still working. Luckily, the one that's still working is the one the dishwasher is connected to. We've looked at it, we've had cameras do it, we had Scott come in and confirm it, we called Hiller Company, they confirmed all this, also. All this is under concrete, so you're talking about busting up floors.
And David explains the old clay type, didn't he?
Yeah, it's a black ash pit, and we've got it on cam, where it just crumbled under there. Also, under that is all the electrical and all the water's under there. So what I'm thinking's going to happen, when you start busting out, and where there's no plans for that school, so we know where nothing is, so it's just hit or miss. We had to run electrical, run a new line electric to a plug back that spring, and we'd run a wire through that, through the conduit, and we'd come out the other end soaking the water. So, I know that's got condu, condu's got water in, so I think we're going to run into it, so when you go busting up, and that's the reason I come up with this. The other problem that's going on, also, not a serious problem, is the ceiling. Ceiling there is not a drop ceiling, it's a solid ceiling, can't get above it. What essentially is, is, it is extended metal, and they've got, they've put some type of plaster over it, and that's what the ceiling is, and over time, with all the moisture that's in the kitchen, with the steam and the water from the dishwasher and all that, it's just, and you can't, we're not having to get anything to consist to stick to it, so our remedy to it has been putting a sheet of luan on it, and that's how we're fixing it. So, that's the reason I come up with this, that I think we need to look at doing a renovation of this. When I went to Oakley Engineering and this, this told them I wanted to get sort of a bare bones price, now these are just budget prices, these are not, just not in bed, nothing, of course, this to give you an idea of what we're thinking about. What you see there on the first one, option one, take out that grease trap sewer line, asphalt paving, that's 140, I didn't tell them to put that in there, we don't need to do that, with this, if this is what we're choosing, so take that part out of there. As you see there, you're just renovating that, it's pretty separate, it's going to remove, replace existing slab, drain lines fixed, run all the water and electrical above the ceiling, take the ceiling out, run it above, so if you get a leak, get something, you can actually work on it. And then, the electrical drops there. That is their estimated cost to do that, again, take out that 130, that civil down there, out of that, because that's not supposed to be in there. The other option, and then I wanted to give them the, I guess, so to speak, the Cadillac of, to see what, to redo, rebuild, repair it, all that, and redo it. As, it's exactly what we said in the first option, you can see here, new coolers, new freezers, all this, new serving line, kitchen washing area, new equipment, and also, if you're familiar with Carthage Elementary, there is a loading dock out back, we're going to make, we're going to extend the kitchen out, so that's about 30 by 8, so about 254 square feet, add that on, add a new loading dock there, then we're going to have to move the grease trap, it'll be sitting on top of the grease trap, then that will have to be moved, a new one, and it needs, honestly, it needs doing anyway, we have to have that one, it's just inefficient, I don't know if it's not big enough or whatever, but we have to have it humped every three months, just to keep it from backing up into the lines, because it just can't handle. So, this is, so this is, to me, this is the top of the line, so to speak, on this. Now, all this stuff, we can cherry pick through it. If you decide you want to do one thing, this would just, if you don't want to do one thing, do the other, this is something to consider, you do it all, cherry pick through it, that's just something to discuss. And this is just for your consideration and information, I know that other line, it's going to fail one of these days, I don't know, it may last five years, but I just think you need to know what's going on. So, if there's anything else I can add.
That takes two hundred and eighty, you was talking about, is that stories or whatever?
Well, about it, there's a plan on the back, if you look, this is the actual drawing of what it will look like, I know it's not, it's a hurdle in eight and a half, at 11, but if you could look at that, it kind of shows you the, the serving lines, it's kind of turned to where, if you can see, I don't know if it's not on there, but you've got the freezers on the left side, if you're holding it, it'll be on the right side, the loading dock will take up that area back, where you see this back area here, and that's going to be part of the kitchen, if they're extending that out, they'll take steel beam, and that'll be part of a, and they'll build a new loading dock on it. I know it can't, hard to see, but if you expand that, that's all the new equipment, we are using some of our existing equipment, some of that and all that, and Mr. David here, but for something you need to add to or anything like that, she's here in agreement and all this, to answer any questions, that, but.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
David, did I read this right, or is this fire suppression system in this school valid?
Well, it gets updated, it has, because it's inspected every six months, and then we have every five years, and then it has to be redone, and all the, the fire suppression system, that's over the hood. No, that's, that goes to inspection all the time, so yeah, with that, that's kept up. Now, the part of that that's on the roof, part of the protection, the makeup air system to go, that hasn't worked, who knows when it worked last. I mean, it's, it's, it's so dilapidated, we're afraid to touch it, so it's just in pieces, and that's.
But I am afraid, but this is the only school in the county that has not been renovated.
The kitchen part has not, yeah, everything else got renovated. Uh, Carthage, I'm sorry, no, Smith County has to be renovated. But Mr. Lewis, I think what you're getting at is, that building's not anything actually done to it yet, when we're done with renovation, that building will not touch.
Right.
All money was spent in the, in, your, out of schools? Yes. And nothing's been done to that, and I do know that has been an issue, let's show you how long you've been there?
It's my third year.
Third, and it goes back? Yeah, from way. Way back, that, with the issues that got with this, and, Mr. Apple, I wonder if I looked at you back in the summer, and it is, it's, I mean, it's been an issue forever, I mean, just an issue for quite some time, and it's got to have something, something's got to be done with it. Stephanie, that does everything that far as equipment, why is that we bring it up?
Yes, sir, I have met with him and kind of gave him the list of things that we needed to replace, yes, sir.
But we got to be careful here, though, how are we standing in the budget, do we have enough money in the budget possibly to go ahead and bid this out, and another question of how, there's a need and there's a want, there's a need, it needs to be renovated and updated, and then there's a want, we need to add on to it, so we need to kind of pick between the need and the want, and then, how are we standing budget-wise to maybe drop a million dollars on this?
When you were talking about expanding it, currently, we have two freezers that are already located on the dock, so we're utilizing that space for storage anyway, and then we have a small space for them to back up to, so we're already kind of utilizing that space for storage with our freezers that are on our dock, just to have enough freezer space for that school, if that helps.
It helps a little bit, but there's still, there's still a need and a want, a need to renovate and a want to add on to, to make it bigger, and I'm not saying I'm far or against it or one of them, I just like to know where we're standing budget-wise.
Well, Mr. Manning, I will say, there is a need, because I have seen it myself, when, especially when she's having, which I know you probably won't have this year, but when you have your Thanksgiving.
I mean.
He can get ugly back there. Now, he can, he can get ugly, as much as I got time to run through that system, I will say that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
I mean, it's down to one line, right, that one line breaks?
Yeah.
You got to shut it down.
You got to shut the kitchen down.
And then you're looking at shutting the kitchen down, you're looking at 10 months.
Oh, yeah, that's the reason I.
We was actually shutting down for a while, we got the health department, we sold, and we got it back working, so we were shutting down for a while, but it's fine. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, let me ask this question, I know we have a standing building committee, correct?
Yes.
And in line with what Mr. Manning is saying, you know, there's needs and there's wants, and then David is saying, you can kind of cherry pick through all of this, but I'd ask if it would be improper for the building committee to sit down with David and then and kind of go through this, a little fine, too calm, and talk about some things Mr. Manning's talking about, see what we can whittle down with this, so that we've got a ballpark idea of where we're standing, you know, like you were talking about cherry picking through it, kind of see what the need, I guess, Mr. Manning, like you said, need and want, and come back with a couple of options to the school board, and let's get on with this thing, because like Mr. Apple said, that one line goes down tonight, we're going to be in serious circumstances over there, if I'm understanding you right, is that correct, David?
That's correct.
Would that be an improper thing to do, Mr. Chairman?
Also, I thought it'd be an excellent idea to do that, to get the building committee with Mr. David here, to sit down and. He'd know more than I do about when he comes out of equipment, he knows a whole lot more about it. And Ms. Stephanie here, get together, because she's, she's on the equipment end, David didn't know what that system needs.
And, can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
Working at the sheriff's office, I've worked there 15 years, and I've had to deal with the jail, and their kitchen, it's a lot similar to, to working as a school, it's, it's a system, and you got to have codes, and, and there's a lot of state regulations that, that we have to pass, and I've been in Carthage Elementary's kitchen, I've walked through the back, met many of the cooks, and know them all personally, it really needs a renovation full on, because I guarantee you, there's not enough storage, these dry foods have to be kept in a certain area at a certain temperature, the cold foods have to be kept at a certain temperature, and I guarantee you, right now, our freezers and our refrigerators are probably not big enough in holding those, am I right?
That's correct.
What's the serviceable life left in those, what were they replaced last?
What, that?
With the freezers and refrigerators?
All right, well, I've been in this part of the job 15 years, and they were here when I got here, so I have no idea when they were, I have no.
So, they're, they're at, or near the end of their service?
Yeah, they're, they're the end of their life, anyway. And a lot of that equipment, too, especially the dishwasher, which that, that's even on the, on the lower end, on the cheap end, that equipment, that's for that dishwasher, because it's getting almost impossible to find parts for that, because they're almost having craft parts for it.
And, and we have that same issue at my work with our dishwasher, it breaks down constantly, and the water has to be at a certain temperature, I mean, and, and it, there's a lot to, to run in the kitchen, I understand that completely, because I've had to deal with it a lot.
Yeah, and another thing to point out in this, on the, on the upper end, on the high end one, is that we want to put, have a kitchen, have its own hot water system. Right now, they have to share the water from, hot water from the school, and it's about 100 feet down the other end of the school, so you can imagine turning the water on, having it sit there and wait, and that's, and this, the 1.5 million one, included putting its own water system, hot water system, which I think's really important, I think that is a need, I don't see how they've done, what have they done all these years, but.
Mr. Chairman, if you allow me, I'll make a motion, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that the building committee meet with David and whoever's necessary to review these things, do them with Carthage Elementary School, report back to us as expeditions so as possible, so that we can make an educated decision, and then move forward with the actual things, repairs and things that are necessary.
Heard his motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Close. Okay, let's go on to, I guess we did need to get into our discussions, school audits for 2019 and '20.
I hope that you've had an opportunity to look at this, Norma's also here, I'm going to let her answer more in depth, but a couple of things I'd like to point out, that overall, I was very pleased, we had a couple of new bookkeepers, it's obviously takes a year or two, one of the big things I wanted to point out, I don't think, Norma corrected on this, segregation duties, this never happened here before, to my knowledge, and we had preschool, Forks River.
Getting it removed.
They what, got it removed, yeah, and they, you know, we've always used the excuse we're too small, but we know we can do it now, got it broken. Forks River, Wolfville Elementary, and whom I believe?
Smith County High.
Smith County High School, so that's pretty awesome to do that, that's never happened. I know it didn't happen before, and I can't remember since I've been here in the rapid. So, if you've got any questions about particular schools, we'd be happy to answer those, or after the meeting, but Norma's here, if it's more in depth, I'd be happy to answer it. Norma, you want to say anything?
And the experts are here, the managers of the school, like, you know, the principals, we're going to be here tonight, so they can also help answer any questions if there's any, but, yeah, it's great, we've got lack of segregation duties removed from three schools, and the other schools are now working to get it removed also, so we expect in the future for that to be completely gone, which is a big, big, big improvement.
Mr. Director, I appreciate everything that you and Ms. Norma and all of our principals do, to keep us physically sound all the time, it's kind of enticing, it, it makes me all the time, what a great job you and all these principals and Ms. Norma do.
Well, it's, the schools take a lot of ownership, and Mr. Lewis, and, and Norma's done a good job of them buying in, they're big, good bookkeepers, and, and they really have tried to understand, you know, nobody wants to talk tonight and have a fight, it's pretty embarrassing, but they take a lot of pride in that, and I appreciate them doing that.
Good job.
Do you have anything else? Good on that one, any board members need to ask a question, do any of the principals or anything? If not, let's go on to our COVID update from our director.
Can you hear me? Is that working? Okay. I'm going to start out with a couple of things, first of all, I know from having a wife that's a teacher, and I know from being in this profession for four years, I want to admit now, I've never seen times quite like they are right now, and people that don't think teachers and principals and administrations is having a hard time and putting their hours in right now, don't understand what's going on, we're asking a lot of our people, our parents, our students, and I'd like to say that it was about over, but we have no clue what's coming, and that's the reason we got to be leaders and do the thing to try. I want to start out by giving the numbers today, countywide, as far as actual students either that are positive, or are out of school, it's 549, and actual employees, this is where our infrastructure problems coming in, is at 65 today, and this is not counting several cents full clock that's coming in. You know, I want to start, I want to answer two, three questions I was asked for the last meeting, one was Plexiglas, David and I talked, I think, and a couple of Plexiglas is not feasible, first of all, you can't find it, I think it's about 140, $50 a sheet, it would cost probably getting several thousand dollars per room, and then the expenditure is, once you leave, what are you going to do with it, hopefully one of these days it's sold. The other, the other question was shower curtains, we didn't think that would look good in the classroom, it's very long, and, and it would be a security issue, what was going on behind the curtains, and so on and so on. One thing that we are doing that, that I'm pretty excited about, that's cutting edge, actually, as you speak, there's a test going on right now here, we're trying something that's much cheaper, that we think is much more effective, and it's called bipolar ionization, and if it works, we think at a cost efficient, we can put it in each school. It basically, I'm not a scientist, but it is science, the ions are attracted, the atoms shock, it removes smell, common cold, flu, it's what airplanes are using right now, and we're doing a test in, in this office right now, as we speak, before and after, and the presentation will be ready in about two weeks for the board, and, and we'll see if it works, it works, if it don't, we'll look at.
To be in profit for the building committee to sit down with David and then kind of go through this, a little fine, take calm and talk about some things Mr. Mann's talking about, see what we can whittle down with this so that we've got a ballpark idea of where we're standing, you know, like you were talking about cherry picking through it, kind of see what the need, I guess, Mr. Mann, like you said, they want, and come back with a couple of options to the school board and let's get on with this thing because like Mr. Rappel said, that one line goes down tonight, we're going to be in serious circumstances over there, if I'm understanding you right, is that correct Dave?
That's correct.
Would that be any proper thing to do, Mr. Chair?
Also, I thought it'd be an excellent idea to do that, to get the building committee with Mr. David here, sit down and-
He'd know more than I do about when he comes out of equipment, he knows a whole lot more about it.
And Miss Stephanie here get together because she's on the equivalent end of it and know what that system needs.
And can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
Working at the sheriff's office, I've worked there fifteen years and I've had to deal with the jail and their kitchen, it's a lot similar to working as a school, it's a system and you gotta have codes and there's a lot of state regulations that we have to pass, and I've been in Carthage Elementary's kitchen, I've walked through the back, met many of the cooks and know them all personally, it really needs a renovation full on, because I guarantee there's not enough storage, these dry foods have to be kept in a certain area at a certain temperature, the cold foods have to be kept at a certain temperature, and I guarantee you right now, our freezers and our refrigerators are probably not big enough in holding those, am I right?
That's correct.
What's the serviceable life left in those, when were they replaced last?
What was that?
With the freezers and refrigerators?
Well, I've been in this part of the job fifteen years and they were here when I got here, so I have no idea when they were, I have no-
So they're at or near the end of their service-
Yeah, they're at the end of their life anyway. And a lot of that equipment too, especially the dishwasher, which that's even on the lower end, the cheap end, that equipment, that's for that dishwasher, because it's getting almost impossible to find parts for that, they're almost having craft parts for it.
And we have that same issue at my work with our dishwasher, it breaks down constantly and the water has to be at a certain temperature, and there's a lot to run in the kitchen, I understand that completely because I've had to deal with it a lot.
Yeah, another thing to point out in this on the upper end, the high end one, is that we want to put, have a kitchen, have its own hot water system, right now they have to share the water from, hot water from the school and it's about a hundred feet down the other end of the school, so you can imagine turning the water on, having it sit there and wait, and that's in this, the 1.5 million one, including putting its own water system, hot water system, which I think is really important, I think that is a need, I don't see how they've done, what have they done all these years, but-
Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me, I'll make a motion, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that the building committee meet with David and whoever's necessary to review these things, do them with Carthage Elementary School, report back to us as expeditions so as possible so that we can make an educated decision and then move forward with the actual things and areas and things that are necessary.
Heard his motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
Both. Okay, let's go on to, I guess we did need to get into our discussions, school audits
I hope that you've had an opportunity to look at this, Norma's also here, I'm gonna let her answer more in depth, but a couple of things I'd like to point out, that overall I'm very pleased, we had a couple of new bookkeepers, it's obviously takes security, one of the big things I wanted to point out, I don't think, Norma correct me on this, segregation duties, it's never happened here before, to my knowledge, and we had preschool, Forks River-
Getting it removed.
They what, got it removed, yeah, and you know, we've always used the excuse we're too small, but we know we can do it now, get it removed. Forks River, North Elementary, and who am I leaving?
Smith County High School.
Smith County High School, so that's pretty awesome to do that, that's never happened, I know it didn't happen before and I can't remember since I've been here in the rapid year, so if you've got any questions about particular schools, we'd be happy to answer those or after the meeting, but Norma's here, if it's more in depth, I'd be happy to answer. Norma, you want to say anything?
And the experts are here, the managers of the school, like you know the principals, we're gonna be here tonight, so they can also help answer any questions if there's any, but yeah, it's great, we've got lack of segregation duties removed from three schools, and the other schools are now working to get it removed also, so we expect in the future for that to be completely gone, which is a big, big, big improvement.
Mr. Director, I appreciate everything that you and Miss Norma and all of our principals do to keep us physically sound all the time, it's quite enticing, it amazes me all the time what a great job you and all these principals and Miss Norma do.
Well, the schools take a lot of ownership, and Mr. Lewis, and Norma's done a good job of them buying in, they're big, good bookkeepers and they really have tried to understand, you know, nobody wants to talk tonight and have a fight, it's pretty embarrassing, but they take a lot of pride in that, and I appreciate them doing that.
Good job.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Chair? Good on that one, do you remember if you need to ask a question to any of the principals or anything? If not, let's go on to our COVID update from our director.
Can you hear me? Is that working? Okay. I'm gonna start out with a couple of things, first of all, I know from having a wife that's a teacher, and I know from being in this profession for more years, I won't admit now, I've never seen times quite like they are right now, and people that don't think teachers and principals and administrators is having a hard time and putting their hours in right now, don't understand what's going on, we're asking a lot of our people, our parents, our students, and I'd like to say that it was about over, but we have no clue what's coming, that's the reason, we gotta be leaders and do the thing to try. I want to start out by giving the numbers today, countywide as far as actual students either that are positive or are out of school, it's 549, and actual employees, this is where our infrastructure problems coming in, is at 65 today, and this is not counting several cents four o'clock that's coming in. You know, I want to start, I want to answer two, three questions I was asked for the last meeting, one was Plexiglas, David and I talked, I think, and a couple Plexiglas is not feasible, first of all, you can't find it, I think it's about a hundred and forty, fifty dollars a sheet, it would cost probably getting to several thousand dollars per room, and then the expenditure is once you leave, what are you gonna do with it? Hopefully one of these days it's sold. The other question was shower curtains, we didn't think that would look good in the classrooms very long, and it would be a security issue, what was going on behind the curtains and so on and so on. One thing that we are doing that I'm pretty excited about is cutting edge, actually as you speak, there's a test going on right now here, we're trying something that's much cheaper that we think is much more effective, and it's called bipolar ionization, and if it works, we think it'll cost efficient, we can put it in each school. It basically, I'm not a scientist, but it is science, the ions are attracted, the atoms shock, it removes smell, common cold, flu, it's what airplanes are using right now, and we're doing a test in this office right now as we speak, before and after, and the presentation will be ready in about two weeks for the board, and we'll see if it works, if it works, if it don't, we'll look at something else, but this is much more cost efficient and much, it's 99.9% effective according to studies, that would be something that we would look going forward, maybe put it in every school. Now I'm gonna bounce back and forth with our principals, I want to say this, I appreciate them being here, I asked them and the supervisors to come, I didn't ask them to come to speak, I asked them to come if you had any questions, because you hear rumors, you hear this, you hear that, you can ask them, it's not coming from me painting a picture, or I see, Miss Brittany's here to answer it from the health end of it, but just see what they go through on a daily basis, most of mine, our principals are reaching double digits of staff nearly every day, and they're doing a fantastic job of keeping it pieced together, I've got central office staff that's going out and teaching classes, I've got central office staff that's going and helping the bus garage, answering phones, I've got, that's teamwork, that's not a problem, but I just want you to understand how stretched that they are, this young lady right here serves food, it doesn't hurt, it's like it didn't hurt me, but that's not your role and it's, you're getting stretched. Brittany, we've got good families because we're on the phone together about ten or eleven o'clock pretty much overnight, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and, but it is getting to a point that is, you know, we've got some issues. I have polled numerous counties around us, they're in the same situation as we are, I actually talked to, I won't use their name, I think they had a meeting today at 3:30 to decide what they're doing, but they had 212 staff members out today. We have since fall break, 91 positive cases in the county, as actual students, we've got several tests awaiting today. I've talked to you about the numbers we're at today, I think, and I bet it was individually, if anybody like I mentioned to me, we're at a point that we're gonna have to discuss, I think, can you still hear me? I'm getting used to this thing, okay? We're at a point, I've told you my first, I've had two children on remote, I want to say this, they've had fantastic teachers, that's got, but they've not got the education in my opinion that they're getting with you guys, and I, you don't realize that you don't have it, I do think we're gonna have to look at doing something first before we go remote, I think we need to look at something, a hybrid, but we had a principals meeting, what day of this week, Shane, what was it, when we meet?
Friday.
And then we're gonna try to meet again Thursday, if we decide to do something, I think it needs to get the parents' notice, obviously we need to get the teachers' notice on what we're doing, but we're at a point, infrastructure, that we're not doing the people justification and the students justification, and then now, if you have any questions for principals, supervisors or myself, I'd be glad to take them.
I like to thank the teachers and principals that I've talked to over the past few days and thank you, and I agree with Mr. Smith, it's time for this board to step up and do something, it's obvious that we can't keep on going like we're going right now with COVID numbers higher now than what there was when they shut down the school system back in March, it's at the state now, also flu season's coming on, and when you get the flu into the schools and the COVID into the schools, what's the flu and what's the COVID because the symptoms are kind of the same, and then I think that we definitely need to do something, you know, we talked back this summer, the older board did, you know, if we just could make it to Thanksgiving, if we could just make it to Thanksgiving, and listen, I do not regret my decision standing up to start school on time, and I think that's the right thing to do, I think, you know, we started for AB schedule, we started on a remote learning and trying to get the kids acclimated to our Chromebooks and stuff, in anticipating that we will have to do something around the Thanksgiving time, and I think the time's now to do something. Now, we've had some glitches in remote learning, and we found that out too, of course, remote in my opinion is probably better than nothing, but it's not far from nothing. I think the high school students probably would do okay, remote learning, but I feel for the little elementary students, I feel like they would suffer terribly bad, so I'm kind of with Mr. Smith, I would like to see us maybe possibility going back to try this and before we did go fully remote, to try to go back to maybe an AB schedule, or, you know, talking about like we did at the first part of the year, maybe that way, I don't think this thing locks your fingers too well, I don't think it works at all now, but anyway, I think if we could look at something maybe like the AB schedule and maybe go back to something like that, and maybe we can get classrooms kind of cut down to half maybe, and we could spread these kids out a little bit more, I think might be beneficial for us, and at the same time, you know, I'm still not totally against going remote either, I wish we kind of would try something different before we pull that trigger. I think it's time for the board to actually get ready to do something, because I do not believe we can continue going like we're going right now, because we're asking too much of our employees, too much from the parents, we see it at work, you know, you have COVID contact over and this one's out, and then you're out again, and you're out again, and, you know, just a precautionary, you know, fourteen days, and if you have COVID, it's ten days, I believe, the way it goes, but I think this board needs to look at something, and I think Mr. Smith and the faculty need to come up a plan, and I think we need to give the public notice enough, you know, what we're gonna do, and so, in my opinion, I would like to see us maybe do a hybrid schedule first, at least, you know, you'd have some kids, even if we let Fridays have a remote day, at least you'd have some kids still coming to school a couple of days a week and possibly getting the help that they need to get, and that's my opinion.
I'd like to read this, I got an update this afternoon from, I guess, I remember this particular board, it said, an update, Smith County Health Council and Hospital Board are both very concerned about the rise of COVID within Smith County, positivity rate is 19.4%, bandied patients will be in the garage area full of capacity, there will be a strain on all surrounding hospitals in the coming days, and still all doctors and administrators are agreeing that masks makes difference, I'm just passing on what percent to me, so I read that.
Mr. Director, I echo a lot of what Mr. Mann had to say, and I'm gonna add this, of course, I've had great concerns about this from day one, before we ever began, but it is not, I personally do not believe it is a matter of whether or not it will overwhelm us, it's a matter of when it's going to overwhelm us, it will overwhelm us, now, the other thing in that, and I'm gonna make this a little bit more personal, you know, people are getting sick, I don't want us to lose an employee's life because we're failing to act, or a child's life, or anybody's life, this board needs to do something, needs to do something right now, we've got people wearing fourteen hats trying to do a job, being administrators, serve lunch, everything else, we're asking too much of our employees, and when you stretch them too thin, they can't pay attention to the safety of our children, so it compounds the problem, so we need to do something like right now.
What else would I like to, anything to say?
Yes, sir. The numbers for positive and quarantine, of course, you said that it's 549 and 65 for students and teachers, what is the positive versus the quarantine rate? Our quarantine has got to be high, there can't be that many that's-
40. Mr. Chairman, you asked about the actual positive cases or the, where you subtract, about 425, 450 would be what's under quarantine, the rest of that would be actually positives, Brittany's probably got a more accurate number for today.
We had, right now in the county positives, we have about 66 before the meeting tonight, and we added a couple like you said after four o'clock.
That's actually five, do you need to add?
Yeah, just since we returned to school, after fall break, the week of fall break, no counting any cases before that, we've had like 96 positive cases just since fall break, so less than a month, 96 actual positives, not quarantines.
Is that students or countywide?
That's countywide, it's students and faculty.
That's for- Which was in the system.
System, okay.
Yeah, just our system.
I think what he's asking is, is that in this county?
No, 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 that's in our actual school system.
That's actually in the school system.
I agree that we need to do something for, we can't staff our facilities, but there's got to be some kind of compromise on the cumulative versus consecutive time for us to quarantine these children, these teachers, if there was a, I know we went to 15 minutes cumulative where it was originally according to guidelines, consecutive, I don't know why we couldn't go back to that, I mean, we're quarantining so many people, that's not a deal.
We've not really, to be honest with you, Mr. Chair, and that's not really affected, because you and I've talked about that, the 15 minutes because of our situation, the way the rooms are structured, it's not really affected us, the cumulative versus the 15-minute consecutive, it's not made a lot of difference, do you think, Brittany? We thought it would originally, but-
I think the only place that we see it affecting us primarily are gonna be sports, and if you get on any sort of social media, follow any news, it's not just at our level, it's at college level, professional level, and, you know, the cumulative thing is from the highest level, which is the CDC, that's the governing body that tells us what we should be doing as far as guidelines, and that's what we went on, that's what we're going by, that's what we're, you know, and how the health department goes by as well, so it's really only affected us really in sports settings, outside of that, it's not changed.
Your rooms are pretty much the way they're structured, it doesn't affect it because of the distance, you know, unless you're doing some type of centers where you're at, but sports, obviously the cumulative comes into play, you probably wouldn't be 15 minutes consecutive ever in a ballgame, but then when you get into T W S double A, you've got a whole nother set of rules for our high school athletics.
And that's something else that kind of concerns me also, with basketball season approaching and already started, are we packing them in the gyms?
Each school has given, and they're doing a good job with it, if you count the numbers, but the problem is, once you get them in, they're getting right back in a pack, and you'll see big places in the gym, and that's hard for a principal to control, once you get them in, you know, their family, even the CDC, they see families, so everybody's candy, everybody else, so, you know, you don't, there's not a good answer, you know, I made the comment at the day, we're providing masks, we're providing gloves, we're providing sanitation, so we're making announcements, and Shane, you can answer that, they're right back in a pile, says they getting it over, I want to wear it to county tournament, or the full sheriff tournament, you know, your numbers are where they need to be, but bad thing is, all the numbers are together, you know, so I don't know how to fix that.
We can talk about sports, we can talk about this, talk about that, but the big question is, what's best for our students, is it best for them to go home, is it best for them to be at home alone, or is it best for them to be in school, learning, and being accountable for their learning, you know?
I really, you know- Think they're better off at school, but the issue's the infrastructure, is getting the numbers of teachers and administrators and cooks, and that's where we're having the problem now, is the infrastructure.
You know, first off, I just want to say thank you to our teachers and our principals, our employees, you guys work hard, I understand that, you guys got to wear many hats, and I don't want your job, I promise you, you guys do a wonderful job, especially with the things that we have going on, but, you know, we've got to figure out somehow to get these kids this education, and sending them home with no repercussions to not doing anything, these kids are going home and they're just playing PlayStation all day, you know, they need to be held accountable for not doing that work if they're going home and doing that, and I feel like we're not doing enough to hold these kids accountable when they are sent home, you know, I'm not totally against the hybrid schedule, I'd like to maybe look at, maybe considering, maybe sending these kids home for a week, two weeks or something, and then bringing them straight back into school and giving it a little time for the dust to settle down, possibly till after, you know, bring them back two weeks before we shut down for Christmas, but those kids maybe that went home and doesn't have the opportunities to do their work as much, maybe let them come back in and get some, catch up on some of that during that two weeks, and then they can take off for Christmas, that's kind of my thought process on it, and then maybe at the first of the year, we look at maybe doing something different, maybe look at, you know, I talked to Jamie about how Putnam County is doing their things, and they're doing a whole lot better, they're a bigger county, a lot more employees, a lot more students, and they're doing things a little bit different than us, Jamie, do you care to kind of go over what we talked about?
Not at all, Mr. Glover had asked about Putnam County, and I did investigate to see what they were doing, the biggest difference is they have a mask mandate, everyone in their schools is required to wear a mask, I don't think they do it, of course, when you're eating, eating at recess, but otherwise, in the classroom, in the hallways, going to the cafeteria, everyone's required to have a mask, they are keeping their own data, they're leaving the quarantine up to the health department, but they're certainly not punishing or there's no retribution if the health department tells a child they have to quarantine for 14 days, they identify the close contacts and they contact the parents, and same principle applies if they, if the parent chooses to quarantine their child for that time period, they're allowed to remote learn and do what needs to be done. They're not doing contact tracing with the health department at this point, and that's a decision they made under purpose not to do that, but they are expecting if the health department does tell, but the individual I talked to was a board member said the biggest, the only way they're able to do what they're doing is because they have the mask mandate, that you couldn't have one or the other, that if you didn't require the mask down the line, that they did not believe they would be able to do what they're doing, and they also had a group of doctors, the committees, I think every week, they pointed forward to review their data as it goes along to see if they're on track and there's no huge spike or anything like that, but again, the biggest thing she kept telling me was that they had the mask mandate from the very start, and that's what's probably made the difference, and she did not think they could do it without that.
And, you know, there's nothing says that we can't go back to looking at a mask mandate, you know, if it's a choice between my kid going to school and learning and wearing a mask, or not wearing a mask and being sent home and not doing remote, I'd much rather my kid wear a mask, and I feel like a lot of our parents feel the same way, and I think that might be something that we might have to look at, maybe coming back after Christmas and looking at that situation, and maybe doing something like that.
Mr. Director, I don't mean to put you in a difficult position, but I'm baffled, of course, you're the man driving the train, so here it comes, you're the gentleman every day that's waist deep in this thing, and these folks out here are the ones with their boots on the ground, struggling with it every day, where are we, what do we need to do? Is it a mask mandate, is it waiting for Christmas, is it right now, I mean, you all are struggling with this thing every day, we're here once a month, where are we at?
You, most of what I do, I do scientific base, or I get a lot of opinions, I tell people all the time, I'm not very smart, but I'm smart enough to get a hold of the smartest people, and like today, I've talked to several directors, they're all in the same situation we are, and counties are bored of us, etc., I personally think we need to go to a hybrid schedule right after Thanksgiving, it's gonna get you through the flu season, you're not really gonna miss many days because you still exercise for Christmas break. break. We normally would be off for January, the same, approximately the same. I don't have the calendar in front of me, I don't know. But that would give us a chance. It's hard for teachers and students to start and stop, different styles. And I just think we could get, if we went to a hybrid, that would give each school an opportunity to do their strengths and weaknesses. It would also, I think, accommodate what Mr. Glover's asking, that, that children are accountable. My biggest thing is, I, you know, I know as young as I look, it's hard to imagine, I've got a child in, in first grade, but I have one in first grade and I have one in junior high. And their needs are much different, okay? And, and I'm blessed that they both did well in school, they've had fantastic teachers. But the retainability of my first grader is much different than my eighth grader. And I think it's, and listening to my principals talk, or our principals, I should say again, is that they feel that these children from pre-K through second, third, that's kind of the cutoff, has to be hands-on, has to be, we have to have them in there. And also, Brittany and I, that level of sickness is much different with that age group. So that would let them have an opportunity to see those daily or almost every day. On the other end, my eighth grader that does well, he might not, I'm just saying, he might need to come in every day, every other day, every two days, but he would be held accountable. And I think that's what Mr. Glover's asking, is accountability.
What if we did something for the younger kids to come to school every day?
Mr. Glover, you could do that, the hybrid. You could do that, so they could come. We'd even discussed at the principal's meeting, and I want to think outside the box, I want to be better than everybody around us, okay? Not the easiest, I want to do what's best. You know, we had talked about maybe the buses could run a half a day. And then we, nowadays, there's a lot of parents drive. You know, if you don't play that, get a car ride or ride. And it might be an opportunity that some of those parents, even we've done split days, cut the numbers down, those, you know, you might do this. They could be a group that could, wanted, could bring those at, at lunch, and that you know, through your pre-K through third or whatever. But we could get, it's going to be hard, it's going to be hard on the principals, it's going to be hard on teachers, but I think you're going to do the best for your individual school. And I think it incorporates everything. It allows us to have accountability, but it also, it's addressed, and you said, we're cutting our spaces down, we're doubling our number of teachers, so to speak, that's in the building. So it helps if somebody's out, somebody's sick, it's going to help with spacing. It's going to go back, like Tommy, you can start this conversation more like we start school, or almost exactly like we start school.
I really feel like, you know, our K through four, they, they're the ones that really need that extra help. They're the ones that's developing first and, and their minds are, need to be more hands-on.
And in, and in your special needs group, also, you're not going to have a choice because you're, you know, you're, what I'm understanding from the federal government, you're still going to have to have an IEP. If a child needs to get three hours, they're still going to have to get that, whether that be through the home event service, walk-ins. The schedule might change, you might not be a city, you get them 30 minutes. If you're going to two and a half hour, it might not be 30 minutes every day, you might serve them twice a week or once a week as walk-ins or in the house. But that's another thing we could accommodate, I think, that in a hybrid schedule.
Mr. Director, if you would please, sir, I, I mean, I think, you know, we can, we can beat this thing all night long. What's happening in Smith County may be akin to what's happening in Putnam County or Wilson County or not. It can just go round and round and round. And there is, Mr. Glover, by about a point, there is a reasonable amount of accountability that needs to play into this. However, I, I just think that personally, what I'd like for us to do, we're, we're doing a lot of talking, we're doing very little acting. So let's put something in place and get this thing going that serves accountability for the children that are younger, that need the environment and need the structure. And also, like you're talking about, in a hybrid schedule gives our employees, it doesn't double the number, but in essence, it, it makes it somewhat that way. But let's, let's get something in place and roll this because I, I think we're on borrowed time, honestly, do you?
Well, I absolutely do. And I don't, again, I want to reiterate, my last, the end of the rope, I would be remote, I just don't think that we're getting, I've got two children. Again, we've had fantastic teachers, they've been over backwards training our children. But you're dealing with so many different levels. And it's like my wife told me last night, she said, "This has been the hardest year I've ever done." She said, "I've, I've got this group I'm trying to teach, I'm trying to keep five on the remote, one of them don't move." And I mean, it's just, you know, and when you're asking different teaching styles, you're hurting all the childrens. So I think, I think that's the reason I personally think we need to look at something more than a week or two because you're starting and stopping about 10 to get acclimated, you know, I just think you're going to get more efficiency out of it. And I think we need to do something this week. I think, I'd like to meet with the principals. I think we're scheduled for Thursday, is that correct? We could get the word out then, or we decided as a group. And then that would give, all during the break there, start getting things lined up for, you know, childcare schedules and so on, transportation.
I'd, I'd say then, again, the younger ones obviously need structure. I mean, I'm 59 years old, I need structure, in first grade, I'm sure I did. But, but either way, you know, we've been talking about this thing since school started, and it's not gotten any better, it's gotten progressively worse. However, whatever the plan is that you have to put together that allows for this flex schedule, A B schedule, allows for structure for the younger children, gives a little bit of relief for our employees, do it, put that thing in place, and let's, let's get, get on with it, set the topic back to their tone.
And also, be serious about the masks too. Maybe we might have to look at mask mandates also, maybe.
Can I just say something real quick about the mask? I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that this is updated just yesterday on the 16th. That it is irrespective if we're wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, it's still considered an exposure if you're within six feet of a positive case. So that does not prevent you from having to go home.
Exactly right.
It is irrespective, according to the CDC, whether you have a mask or not. I'm not saying I forward yet, so I'm just wanting to make sure everybody's clear that even if everyone wears a mask.
You're exactly right.
And you sit beside someone closer than six feet for the cumulative 15 minutes, you would still be considered a direct exposure. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
But if we looked at how Putnam County is doing things, that's left up to the health department to figure out.
Mr. Glover, can I ask, let me understand that, what do you mean, this left up to the health department is how the school system functions?
Jamie, can you explain to him how?
Mr. Glover, some.
He said it was left up to the health department is how that worked out. Explain that to me, what do you mean, the health department's running the school system?
No, sir.
Okay, explain that a little bit more detail.
If the health department tells a student that they must quarantine because they've identified them as a close contact, then they could, the school system is not quarantining. But if the health department tells a student and they, and their parents agree that they quarantine for that period of time, they're not punished and there's no retribution for them quarantining. The school itself, or the school system itself, is not quarantining the students from the school. And they said they were not sharing information necessarily of close contacts with the health department, but if the health department did tell them, they would, that's who is quarantining, not the school.
Okay, that's, that gives me a little bit more clarity on it, but, but even still, that does not hinder us from doing something, Mr. Director, and getting it forward, is that correct?
No, and I, Mr. Glover, I think you're talking about when we come back.
Yes.
Looking at something, but right now, we're in a situation, we've got to do something. That's my opinion. I mean, we're, that now, we're too deep in the, in what we're in, we've got to do something now to slow it down.
It's been my opinion for a month. It, it, we're worse now than we were 30 days ago. If we do not change our path 30 days from now, we're going to be worse than we are right now. I mean, I don't want to be like them in the gloom, but obviously, at 19% transmission rate, and what were we, when we started school, 11, 12%, this is not getting better. And we're contributing to it by not trying to defend this herd somehow.
And if I remember right, there's 8,000 cases at Tennessee alone, there's more, is That, Jamie, that's not, that's, this is basically like a snow day.
The school board's, just like you did tonight, the school board's set the school calendar. And once you start the calendar, the decision to go remote versus not is up to the director's office. Now, there's certainly nothing wrong with having a consensus from this board and your director knowing where everybody stands, but I do not think, unless you want to alter your calendar, that's not anything the board has to officially vote on. It's certainly fair to give your director a consensus of what, what the board wants.
So everyone understands that, in other words, that we've all gave our feelings on how that, that we've, mostly all of us have, what we've all decided that something has to be done. And it is, the director will deal with it with these principals, will go in the right direction to what he thinks is the best. And no reason for a vote of any kind, but we've all expressed how we feel, and we go with it, is that what? One more discussion, we're going to go on. Do you have anything else to explain?
I would like to say, I think you're going to see, from talking today, I know there was one school system that borders, is pretty inside, I said, I won't use their name, but in the intermission, but they were meeting today at 3:30. And I think you're going to see pretty much everybody that borders us doing something in the next few days from what I'm being told.
There, there is a county, there was a county, a couple, a county is so old for us, they went back to A B schedule, starting after Thanksgiving. I didn't hear that from a grandparent today.
Okay. All right, we've had discussion on that. Has everyone had a chance to read over our annual policy reviews that were handed out in October? Any questions on it? No questions, anybody? We have one other thing here, Mr. Glover, do we need to go in the executive session?
No, sir, I don't have.
Okay, nothing to be done there? No, nothing else? We're just being warned, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, before you make a motion, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I, I know, and thank you all for being so patient with me about my passions for this COVID is related. But I just want to say, Mr. Director, and to all of our people that work in the school system, I appreciate you all so much. Some most unprecedented times that we have ever seen. And I can't do anything except sit back here and just imagine the struggles that you go through in your mind every day. And I am just so remarkably grateful that y'all have just waded through this thing daily to take care of our children and say that they get an education. I do not have the vocabulary to express my gratitude to all of you, and I am just so thankful, thank you so much.
Yeah, and I want to reinforce that just for a second, that I don't think there's a one of you that are in our, our principals that I've been on the phone with over every weekend. And I know, and I'm just using her, and I'm willing, you was in, I know, we talk Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, oh, I think that's correct, with Brittany. Brittany and I talk every night until 19:00. I look across, every one of you guys have had double digits, don't think they average. It, it hurts me to know when, when I hear people say, "Well, they're going to be off again." But it, the work, it's much easier on us, them, being in school every day and not having to deal with this, because it is every day they're putting in 12 and 15 hours. So, and I, I couldn't ask for a better stamp, I just want to show I appreciate you.
Nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Tom O.
Manning.
Second.
Second, Mr. Al. Hold that for a jump, excuse me.
Don't.